Good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 8, 2025 Commissioned Meeting for the City of Pittsburgh to order. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to let you know that Commissioner Siggly is joining us by phone. I'd like to invite Pastor Chambers forward to start us off.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. May we join together in prayer. Father, we come this evening to give you thanks for all the blessings you've given to us. Father, we ask you to bless this meeting tonight to be in peace and harmony. We ask, special Lord, right now with all the tragedies that we've had in our nation, central Texas, that we pray for the families. We pray for those that are still waiting for answers, all the first responders. There are so many that have been affected by this, Lord, and it has drifted all the way here, across the nation, around the world. So we ask your comfort upon all of those people, all of us, and even those on the east coast with the hurricane. Continue to bless our area, Father. Keep us safe. It is hot, it is humid, but we ask your blessing that you will keep things under control for us and that we too will reach up to you. And if we see someone that needs help, to reach out and help them, just as each other are reaching across the nation to help others in need. We thank you for all your blessings that you've given to us. And now, blessed is time of gathering. In your holy name we pray, Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Couple things before we move into public comments. We wanted to acknowledge the passing of Dr. John Bailey. He passed away on June 19. Dr. Bailey in the past served as our utilities director, and since then he was an environmental engineer, so he helped us in a consulting role with the, obviously wastewater treatment plant and also the upgrades to the water treatment plant. So we just wanted to send our sympathies to his family. And the other thing is, you may have seen that in the spirit of cooperation, our Pittsburgh Fire Department contributed staff and equipment to a large warehouse fire in Lamar. And our staff worked through the night and came home safe, and we just wanted, in the spirit of cooperation, as all of our first responders do, we wanted to acknowledge them and thank them. All right, we'll move into public. We'll move into public comments. If you come forward, please state your name, your address, and limit your remarks to three minutes, and I will give you the high sign when you're closing in on three minutes. So I would open the mic.
Hi, my name is Kristi Bittner. I live at 1508 Bittner Court. Good evening. We've seen over the last seven years how important the details are in documents presented to the commission. I believe we all can agree on that. So here we are again, needing to share concerns regarding the Silverback development. Just what are the substantial changes in this new agreement besides a 25-year stipulation and a new developer coming in? Who is Silverback Landing LLC? The resolution number 1295 seems a bit convoluted and a flawed document. The city has used the original resolution number of 1206 with new language from the state on amendments to RHIDs to include Silverback Landing LLC. There seem to be some inconsistencies within the document, as Senate Bill 17 law being applied to the new ownership. The city states we have 12 RHIDs at the present time. How many have the 25-year term? With this many housing projects within our community, it seems we've made progress on overcoming the housing shortage. Our real priority and concern should focus on the people shortage we have in Pittsburgh. Looking back over the last eight years of population numbers in the city budget books, within the last three years, we have seen a net increase of 439 people. Again, a people shortage versus a housing shortage. Another concern I have heard over and over from people inquiring about moving to Pittsburgh is the high cost of taxes compared to other communities. In Exhibit C2, it states the existing valuation of the district for the land is $12,216. It also states the improvements are $0. That was fine when the land was being purchased, was all agricultural and nothing on the land. We are seven years later, where many improvements have been made, such as homes completed with owners occupying them, roads, gutters, and sidewalks put in, water, stormwater and sewer systems, and other utilities. How can the city state there is no change to land or no infrastructure after all this time? What differences will the new developer change about the housing facilities and public facilities that are exactly what was written in the 2018 resolution? Will the new owners follow all the rules, ordinances, and policies of the city? There are still unanswered questions about the burn to be put in the development. What about the ownership of the HOA and funds that have been collected since 2021? There is a right way and a wrong way for business of the city. Rules are meant to be followed by everyone, not circumvented for convenience. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi.
Jan Aloy, 1521 Hampton Road. I'm here to speak about the substantial changes to the existing RHID and how the city and developer will address what has not been done as promised since 2018. My focus is the subject of the emergency gate, or crash gate, as it is called. It was promised to be a beautiful iron gate that is pleasing to everyone, with the cost to be no more than $50,000. So far, none of that has been seen. We were told that there must be a northern entrance and would be for emergency use only by the law enforcement department and fire department. After many cars were driving down Hampton Road and into Silverback, the city came out and put a couple of rusted posts up with a cable going across the street. The fire department personnel came and put a lock on the cable. As vehicles continued to go around the posts, two more posts were added. Finally, they were painted Gorilla Yellow to cover the rest. Now, don't get me wrong, I believe Gorilla Gold. Builders came in and took one post out, but never put it back up. The traffic barricades were put up in front of the cable, but kept blowing down. Large orange cones with weights were added to help with the problem. There is a large drainage ditch originally left wide open until a safety issue was addressed. With the city, an orange fence was put up west of the barricade. Now, this is all right in front of my house. Weeds continue to grow up inside the fence and not cut, nor have the tall weeds growing to the south and west off of Hampton Road been cut this year. If the representatives of this group trying to purchase this area are here, are they aware of the many problems? Are we going to have to wait another seven years to get these problems solved? Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Andrea Linder, and I live at 1534 Hampton Road. I first want to start by saying thank you, thank you for listening and hearing our concerns this evening about Silverback Landing. I have two concerns in particular that pertain to the four homes that were built in 2023 and are located right in front of our three-acre property. Those two items consist of drainage and stormwater runoff. When it rains, it seems our front yard is collecting more rainwater and is retaining it more than normal. I'm not sure if that's it, but it's definitely noticeable. It appears that this could be coming from the houses in this new addition, these four homes. The 2018 plans of Silverback Landing indicated that the stormwater would flow toward the west, which would be away from our property. So what has happened here? This needs to be addressed. Secondly, my other concern is the loads, the mounds of dirt, and the weeds that are behind these four new homes. A year ago, spring of 2024, loads of dirt were brought in and dumped behind each of these four homes. One would think that progress was about to happen. Seeing these loads of dirt, I felt good about that. Hey, things are going to improve. We're going to see completion of these homes and yards, and maybe even address the stormwater runoff. But no, that did not happen. It has not happened as yet. Some of these mounds of dirt are three to five feet high. And to make matters worse, weeds have grown on top of the piles of dirt. Some of these dirt piles are six to eight feet inches tall, or eight feet tall, excuse me, and they're just sprouting up with all these weeds. So it is quite a sight to see, however, not in a good way. That's not what we want. And our three-acre property, our being Doug and I, we have lived on our property for 30 years now, our three-acre property butts right up to these piles of dirt. So that's what Doug and I deal with on a daily basis as we come and go about our daily lives. You know, we often hear the comment when we're talking about real estate, the quote, "Not in my backyard." That was even thrown out to us in 2018 as we were trying to bring some of these concerns to the commissioner's attention at that time. And so I just want to say that I don't believe you commissioners, or anyone by that matter, would appreciate what we have been living through, would appreciate these scenarios, whether it be in your front yard or your backyard. So I just hope you take that all into consideration, and I just truly hope that something can and will be done to improve the situation in the not-too-distant future. So, thank you.
William Strength, 1515 Hampton Boulevard in Pittsburgh. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council and city staff. With the possibility of a change in ownership of Silverback Landing, I, among others, wonder if the prospective new owners are aware of all the problems that currently exist at Silverback Landing. These include, but not limited to, stormwater, quality of infrastructure construction, failure to meet timelines required within the RHI, and failure to meet the conditions of the approved plat. The one I would like to discuss tonight is the failure to construct the landscape track. A burn was to be located on the 20-foot landscape track easement. At the May 2018 planning and zoning meeting, a plat was presented to the board for approval. This plat was tabled at that time, but was approved later at the June meeting. The subdivision layout was developed by the current developer's land planner. In the package you received, you will find the subdivision layout showing the 20-foot landscape track, the city of Pittsburgh's definition of a burn, and an example of a landscape burn in one of the current developers' subdivisions in Kansas City. This is very important at this time because there's four houses, which Andrea just talked about, that's going to need occupancy permits, and there's going to be buyers looking at them, and they should realize that there's going to be a burn there and take up quite a bit of their property. So this needs to be looked at. So what I'd like to do right now, so there's no discrepancy as to about the burn, play a short clip from that meeting.
I don't hear the words, so I'm not sure that's working. And you're about out of time, so if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, I'd like to reclaim the 10 seconds you just talked. I'll be glad to share this video. It's from the P&amp;Z meeting, which I had to request by Freedom of Information. It's where Mickey Vanna is talking about the burn and how high it's going to be, and also the city staff member Becky Gray pointing out where the 20-foot track was and that the burn would be in there. I will make sure I get this to every one of you and anybody else that would like to hear it stating that burn was to be put in. It may not be required by the city, but the developer said he was going to put it in, and it needs to be put in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jamie Lynn Bloom. I live at 1901 Carney Smith Court in Silverback Landing. I've testified in Senate hearings, and so I don't want to be repetitive, and I want to respect everyone's time here tonight. But as a homeowner in Silverback Landing, for almost two years, I echo the concerns brought up by the previous public commentators here tonight regarding Resolution Number 1295. I am concerned about the future of Silverback Landing, as the current developer has not kept their word with most of us who live there regarding our neighborhood and regarding our own homes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, I thought this was a podium. I apologize. Hi, my name's Isaiah Harris. I am at 411 East Adams. Can you hear me? I just wanted to say two things. One, I just wanted to applaud you commissioners and Compton for the work that the city has been doing to expand affordable housing options in Pittsburgh and to really encourage development thereof. I think the CHIP program is something that doesn't get a lot of credit in Pittsburgh. It's not something that I hear enough people talking about. In my view, there is one key issue that is affecting the growth and livability of Pittsburgh right now, and that is the issue of affordability. I am 26 years old. My fiance and I were lucky enough to be able to save up enough to buy a house last fall, just August 12, I think, was our closing date, so coming up on a year. And one thing I will tell you from personal experience is buying a house is extremely And one thing I will tell you from personal experience is buying a house is extremely difficult. Me and my family rented our entire life up to that point. And so I just wanted to extend a personal thank you to all of you who have helped that process be at least a little bit easier, and there's room to grow. I mean, anyone who looks at the numbers knows that Pittsburgh is a town of 30,000 people. We need more houses to get those people to live in Pittsburgh, right? And the second comment I had was a comment and question, and I apologize in advance if you guys have already kind of addressed this, but regarding the UPS facility closure that was announced, I think it was a couple months ago, I read it in the Morning Sun, and I apologize, I haven't had time to come to you guys before. But I was wondering if there's anything that the city can do to facilitate it, the individuals that are, will be inevitably losing their jobs at that facility, to transition into alternative work? Or looking forward, if there's anything that the City Commission can do from a policymaking perspective to make it so big companies can't just screw over workers? I apologize, I know that sounded kind of crass. But kind of thinking about how a big company can come in Pittsburgh and then just leave whenever they want. And that leaves a lot of workers in an unfortunate and quite precarious situation of needing to find work. And I apologize if there insinuates a hostile tone there at all, but that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close public input and we'll move into the consent agenda. There's nothing to... Dr. Siggly, did you have anything to be pulled off?
No.
All right. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Cheryl. Roll call vote?
Brooks?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
McNeigh?
Yes.
Muntz?
Yes.
Siggly.
Motion carries. Moving on to consider the following. A Eagle Pitcher Technologies LLC lease. Consider approval of a lease agreement by and between the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, as the landlord and Eagle Pitcher Technologies LLC as the tenant for the new facility to be built in Pittsburgh.
Mayor, City Commissioners, on February 11th of this year, we passed, we approved the lease with Eagle Pitcher. We've had a lot of work between now and then. Most of it is around designing, bidding, contracting, selling bonds. As we went through that process, the lease that we currently have has some hard dates in it regarding when we would transfer that project from the city, getting it built, over to Eagle Pitcher. Steve Westfall, CEO of Eagle Pitcher, I believe, if not many other titles over there, was kind enough to come in today. What I have before you is the updated lease. There's probably six changes in it that are just basically dates, one of them being the date of today that we approved the new lease. And then the biggest one is the substantial completion, which was moved from November into February to give us time to get it built. So I have asked Steve to show up if you want to hear a brief update, maybe, of your progress and how things are going and answer any questions.
So, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, good to see you again. It's been a few months, and we've made a lot of progress, even though we haven't started. I would like to give you an update. A couple of things that have changed, driven the changes in dates, are really what's going on in the world today. What we saw in Iran two weeks ago is really fostering a really deeper look at what Eagle Pitcher does in our plants, in a good way, if you can look at it from that perspective. So our intent is still to move forward with this program. This plant, this project, reached out to Darren. We're going to make the payment, the interest payments for July. We're going to make them in advance to show our commitment. We have not, we're not wavering from the program. I was in Pentagon two weeks ago at Secretary of Defense headsets office. The real issue is, with what's going on in the world today, the US government is just being much more critical and careful about building capacity from a security and safety standpoint. And it made us step back as we were going through this process with the builder, making sure that everything was ticked and tied from a security and safety standpoint, that the government wants today versus what they wanted in February because of the changes in the world. So those have been worked out. You know, business is doing well. The current Pittsburgh facility is up about 50% from where it was in February. We will still be completing this project on or around before February, end of February. Intent is still to have 50 new employees sometime next year, starting out with more of the salary workers, and then 30 or 30, 35 production manufacturing hourly jobs will be next year. And we are seeing growth. What we all saw in the news two weeks ago of Tomahawk missiles and bunker busters, that's going to be built in this facility. And so there is a, there is a need from the US government to make sure that we've stepped back and we've added the capacity that we need and we've added the safety and security that we need for the facility. And that's, that's been one of the things that made us step back and pause, not just pause for 60 days to make sure everything was ticked and tied with the architect and the contractor. And, you know, Darren and the city have been nice enough and you, nice enough, to give us that time. And now we want to go ahead and start moving forward. But that's the reason for the delay.
So just so we're clear, you're just building components for those.
We are building components for those, those, those things.
Yes. So we're clear.
We're not building the actual Tomahawk missile. We actually build...
I'm sure there's no confusion.
The power components of that, yes, yes.
And have been for many years.
Yeah.
60 years.
Yeah.
Yeah. But our intent, and we still plan on getting this done, it's just we wanted to take, the government asked us to step back and make sure that we had everything ticked and tied for capacity that's coming.
Right, any other questions for Darren?
Moved to approve the change.
Second.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Cheryl to approve the updated lease. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good luck. Resolution Number 1295. Consider approval of Resolution Number 1295, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, determining that the city is considering a substantial change to an existing rural housing incentive district. To extend the timeframe for such district, providing a substantial change to the district plan and providing for notice of a public hearing to consider such actions. Silverback Landing Phase One Rural Housing Incentive District.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. We're requesting this resolution calling for a public hearing to consider substantial changes. I do have Garth Herman here with Gilmore and Bell. He's going to kind of break down what that means for us. I also have Matt Burton here as a representative of our Community Development Corporation, Point Forward, that will be here to answer some questions for you as well. I did want to just explain or remind what the RID is. So as most of you know, Silverback Landing is a rural housing incentive district. It's established in 2018. This chart is just kind of breaking down how that would ideally work, which most of you know, but basically taking undeveloped land, establishing a RID. The developer funds the infrastructure typically in these agreements, so the roads, the sewer, the water, curb gutter, things like that. Once the homes are built and put on the tax rolls, that incremental, that growth in property tax is captured and is paid back to the developer for their infrastructure investment. So that's an ideal. We do have multiple RHIDs within Pittsburgh that have been successful. This one got slightly delayed. And thank you to everyone who's expressing their thoughts on that, and we understand that. And we hope to hear more of that at the public hearing. So we're aware of those things, and we're looking forward to a change is the, is the plan here. So with new ownership, that change would happen. And we're hoping to bring that to fruition for everyone that not only lives out there, but also the City of Pittsburgh and our need for housing. This chart just outlines Phase One, Two, and Three of the development. So the pink or fuchsia, whatever color you prefer, is Phase One, and that is what we're discussing tonight and at the public hearing. So we're looking for some changes to that by extending the timeframe and then also hopefully transferring to new ownership. So I just wanted to kind of outline a few of the things so everybody's on the same page with what we're discussing this evening. And then, like I said, I have Garth Herman here from Gilmore and Bell. He's going to break it down for you a little bit. And then we have Matt Burton, who's here with Point Forward, our Community Development Corporation, which is the organization that is hopefully going to acquire the development and bring it forward, so.
Kim, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The developer will be reimbursed for the infrastructure through the RHID. That's the original.
I'm sorry, what?
The developer, P&amp;L, whatever it was, when he builds a house and when he puts the infrastructure in.
Yep, the roads and everything.
He's reimbursed, but that RHID also includes what he pays for the land, right?
Yeah, it can be land acquisition as an eligible cost, yes. That Phase One, the requirements for the Phase One in the development agreement have not been met by the developer. So those RID funds or those property tax dollars have been held by the City of Pittsburgh and have not been released to the developer at this time. Okay, other questions for me?
Thank you, Kim.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the City's Bond Council. Kim did such a great job, she didn't, she didn't leave me too much to talk about. So I'll try to be quick and be available for questions, though. I thought it might be helpful to have a little bit of background. Obviously, everybody is very familiar with the specifics of the Silverback Landing RHID. But briefly, back in 2018, when it was originally created, the RHID law at that time had a maximum length for each project of not more than 15 years. And so in 2018, September of 2018, when the ordinance was formally passed and the district itself was created, it was limited to a not-to-exceed-15-year timeframe. And during that 15 years, as Kim mentioned, the plan was that as the properties were developed, those increased property taxes, the incremental value from those, would be redirected through the RHID flow of funds and ultimately back to the developer to reimburse their eligible costs. And the document that describes what those eligible costs are are the development agreement between, at that point, P&amp;L Development and the city. The law does provide for substantial changes that can be made to a district or a district plan. In order to make a substantial change, the city has to go through basically the same process that it needed to do originally when it created the district. So that's the need for the resolution that we have before you tonight. Realistically, and what this resolution does is it says that there is going to be a substantial change proposed to the existing RHID. The substantial change is going to be to extend the maximum life of that district from the original 15 years to 25 years. This can be allowed, because the RHID Act was amended a few years ago, to provide that longer timeframe for reimbursement of those eligible costs. So in order to allow some of these older RHIDs to take advantage of that longer term, that's why we would be going through this substantial change program. As I mentioned, in order to do that, the city would need to adopt a resolution to call for a new public hearing on the substantial change to the district and the district plan. As written, the resolution anticipates that there will be a public hearing, if it is adopted. There will be a public hearing to be held on August the 12th, 2025, here at the City Commission meeting on that date. In advance of that date, the city would arrange to have a copy of this resolution, along with all the exhibits, sent to the Board of Education of USC 250, the Crawford County Board of County Commissioners, and the City Planning Commission. In addition, the resolution will also be published one time in the Morning Sun between one to two weeks ahead of the date of that public hearing to provide notice, you know, to the public at large that there will be a public hearing held on the adoption of a substantial change to this, to this existing RHID. With that being said, I will also add that, as Kim mentioned, part of the plan for this is that there is going to be a change in the developer. So P&amp;L Development is the current developer, you know, as we know, under that development agreement. Part of the updated plan is that Silverback Landing LLC would be the successor developer, and they would actually take over the responsibilities of developing the remainder of Phase One, including meeting the requirements that are going to be in that development agreement that relates to Silverback Landing, so that those funds that are on hold, as Kim mentioned, can actually be used for their intended purpose to reimburse costs of the eligible improvements that have been and will be made to serve this development. So with that being said, I'll pause for any questions or if anybody else has anything they'd like to add.
Have you had any, since this change, the way, you know, RHID from 15 to 25 years, have you had any experience, other than us, with that change?
Not specifically in this regards, but I have been through a process with other RHIDs to make substantial changes, changes to the actual project. Likewise, RHID is somewhat similar to another program under state law called TIF, Tax Increment Financing. It's a very similar structure on how it works. TIF also allows for substantial changes to be made by going through a similar process. I've been through substantial change proceedings for TIF a number of times.
My next question is, those funds that were held by the city, you just said those will be used to, to do what the original developer said he was going to do. So those funds will go to the new developer? Or will they stay with the old developer that put in some of the infrastructure, but didn't do it all? So who gets the funds?
So that'll be set out in that development agreement. But the short answer is that they will go to the eligible party. So whether that, if, you know, right now, the original developer has a, you know, right to those funds if they perform under their contract with the city. Once that agreement changes hands, then those funds would be eligible for the new developer so long as the new developer performs their duties and obligations under that agreement as well.
The original agreement?
The original agreement, it will be amended to include, you know, to include information about the new developer, who's basically stepping into the shoes of the old developer.
Right.
Why wouldn't you just start a new one altogether?
New RHID? So if we start a new RHID, then the value would be set at what it is now. And so by doing a substantial change, we have an existing district in place. And so we're able to operate under some of the facts that were in existence in 2018 when this district was created. If we turn off the district and we start a brand-new district, then we have to do everything from today's date and today's values. And there has been development out there. So those values would be higher, so the incremental revenue from the district would be less.
So it kind of goes against the incentive of the RID.
But you're using the information from 2018, though.
Yes.
That's the point.
Because we're making an amendment to what we did in 2018 instead of starting over in 2025.
If we were not extending to 25 and it was just a change in developers, would that constitute substantial changes and we'd have to go through this?
It would not, it would not be required to go through a substantial change procedure just for that.
So it's extending to 25 that's driving this?
Yes.
Okay.
So just the year is all it is? And then you're saying the valuation? Because we know that the improvements are there and they're not zero, but that you're trying to keep that down where it was eight years ago?
Yeah, we have an existing district, and if we do nothing, that existing district will, you know, still be in existence for the 15 years from when it was started in 2018, if nothing happens. But by doing an amendment to that, we get to add 10 more years to that, let's call it the existing deal. So those values from 2018 will still be able to stay...
You're using the benefits of back then now, then?
Yes, to the benefit of continuing the development and trying to get the city and the development and the property owners out there the benefit of what everybody agreed to back in 2018.
Okay, as far as the housing needs analysis from October of 2015?
Yes.
We've had housing needs analysis since then. What's the difference between using that one 10 years old compared to the one that was done last year?
So that was the, that was the housing needs analysis that was done when this district was originally created. So the big picture process on how a RHID is created is there's a housing needs analysis, and then the city adopts a resolution that says we have certain areas in town that we would like to have eligible to make RHIDs within those areas. That, in those areas, it uses some of that information from the housing needs analysis. That resolution is adopted by the City Commission and published. That resolution, along with the housing needs analysis that are referenced, go up to the Department of Commerce for their review and approval. And then once Department of Commerce says, "We agree with the finding..." And then once Department of Commerce says, we agree with the findings in this analysis, we agree with the findings in this resolution, these areas in the resolution are now eligible to have a district created in them. Silverback Landing District was created based on that twenty fifteen housing needs analysis and that Department of Commerce resolution from, I think, the twenty seventeen, maybe early twenty eighteen time period. And so that's why in this resolution, where we talk about the housing needs analysis from twenty fifteen, that's referenced because that was the analysis that was used when Silverback Landing was originally created.
That's where the confusion lies because you're using the old data and, and it seems like you would, you would think that you would use the data that's here now. I kind of understand what you're saying, but what's the difference between the resolutions, twelve ninety-five versus the old twelve oh six? Is that your part or is that our part?
Which, which, is twelve ninety-five the current one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, okay, so it, so twelve, twelve ninety-five is the one that we're talking about doing right now?
Mm-hmm.
And which was the other one that you mentioned?
Twelve oh six. It was the old one.
Yes, so that, that was.
Was twelve oh six back in eighteen and twelve ninety-five is now?
Yes, yes.
I just wondered what the difference was.
Is the biggest difference, the change of ownership and the substantial change? I mean, the, the, the.
The extension.
The, the, the big change is extending it for additional ten years because that's, that is a substantial, that is a substantial change from what was originally presented.
The change of ownership is not a substantial change in our, in our RID, right?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
So that, that happens, I'm sure, other places, the change of ownership.
I think to help clarify it, and believe me, I'm not Garth, but he's explained it to me three hundred times. I've tried to figure out what he's talking about. Somebody approached them about buying this with the condition of using the RID. The attractive apart, the attractive part of it is that it used to be a field and now there's RID proceeds coming in. What you're referring to is, why don't we just start a new RID? Starting a new RID would probably take this deal off the table because it, it's already existing, it's already based on all, all the baseline information that we have, the housing study, the property values, all those things are part of that RID. So the request is not at all, we went to Garth and said, what do we need to do to help this? And he said, all you need to do to appease, um, what they're requesting is to transfer the RID. Now, if the developer came back that's going to buy it and said, we want to start a new RID, that would be completely different, but that's their call. What they're just asking us for is a condition of buying it.
Right.
Is that we just extend the existing RID to twenty-five years to everybody else and give us a chance to make it work.
Because seven years have already passed.
So everything else.
Seven years have already passed on the fifteen years, so.
Yeah, but the condition of the resolution, why it's so similar, it has to be similar to the other one. It's the existing RID. We can't redo.
Right.
They're not requesting a new RID.
But the Kansas Department of Commerce allows for this to happen.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But this, this is contingent on that property selling. We want to extend the RID for the current owner of that development.
Correct.
And to your point, Cheryl, in terms of the needs assessment, any needs assessment from when Silverback, um, was on the table would rec, would acknowledge that, those houses. So, you know, if, if.
Used to deck those houses as well.
Yeah, I mean, if they say we don't need that level of house, well, that's because Silverback's already, you know, in theory, in place, so.
Well, this definitely, this map is, is good to see, so.
Garth, correct me if I'm wrong, but the ordinance after the hearing in thirty days?
Yes.
Would in fact say that, that condition that, that Commissioner Moncel just said with, this extension would only take place if this sale goes through.
Yes.
If it doesn't go through, then it would come off the table and P and L Development would not get the extension.
Yes.
I mean, I, I just see it as houses aren't being built. We have a new buyer that wants to build houses. How can we help in that? And this is what you're asking for, so.
Doc, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
I would move to approve their change.
Oh, I think there's other people to speak.
Do we need to hear from?
This isn't a public hearing.
No, this resolution just calls the public hearing.
For a public hearing. We're not approving.
This is just set in the public hearing for a month.
For August twelfth.
Yes.
Okay.
But Matt is here.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear if you're done, what, Matt?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, Matt.
I might kind of look to the audience as well. I don't, um, I know this group had a lot of comments. So my name's Matt Burton. I'm, I'm representing Point Forward, which is a local community development corporation. There's some information on the screen. Um, it's a nonprofit. Um, it was founded in two thousand and twenty-two, kind of an outflow of Imagine Pittsburgh. Founding organizations were the school district, the chamber of the city of Pittsburgh.
Hey, Matt, Matt, I know you're trying to talk to this kid. If you could get closer to the microphone.
Microphone, yes. And the, um, and Pittsburgh State University. We're governed by a board, represented by those organizations and other people in the community, and we're focused on development projects that benefit the community. So we have entered into a, um, purchase agreement with, um, the current property owner to acquire Silverback. Um, that, that purchase agreement is good until the end of September. So that's the time we have to complete the normal due diligence process, as well as develop a plan for if we were to acquire this, how can we move the project forward in a positive way? Um, I can't tell you all of the details of that plan yet because we haven't developed it. I can speak to you about the objectives and the intent. I think first and foremost is, um, respecting the homeowners who have already made an investment in that development. Um, I think second is about how do we make some immediate, obvious improvements? Signage, cleaning up the site, um, landscaping, things like that, that are desperately overdue. Uh, third, how do we dramatically increase the pace of building out there? I think key to that is, is, is significantly reducing the cost of the lots. They need to be more affordable and engaging with local builders and as much as possible, local tradespeople. So that takes us till the end of September, um, to get those things done. I think what I'd want to emphasize is, um, we're not asking the city for any funding. Um, we think the potential of Silverback is there to dramatically add to the number of houses in this community, um, to, um, the quality of life of the people who live in that neighborhood and support the economic development of the city. We just want an opportunity to, to contribute to that, um, if we can get through closing. So that's it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Matt, I, I just, you heard a lot of concern, uh, residents in the area.
Understandably so.
So, uh, the public hearing in August, will you have answers to some of those concerns by then?
Some. Uh, we have a lot of work to do between now and the end of September. Uh, we have no desire to be involved in a project that doesn't add to the community in a positive way. And that's the purpose of the organization. Um, it's, it, this is an organization that exists for the benefit of Pittsburgh. Um, we are completely transparent with what we, with what we'll know at the time and don't know. So if we don't know, we'll, we'll tell you, we don't know the answer, um, to, to that. And we won't take something on that we can't, that we can't do in a positive way.
So if all the stars align, um, phase one, do you, do you guys have a projected timeline for that? Like four to five years or?
So I, I think I talked to you about a window. So I think based on the builders that we're working with, if money was no object to those builders, it's completely feasible to have that done in two to three years. If, 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 if money is a little bit of an object, which it often is, right? Um, then, then that would take more like four or five, um, at the longest, six years. It's really going to be a function of the financial support we can get for those builders, right?
I think lots are left on that phase of one.
It's about thirty-five-ish, um, um, to, to get done.
Another question, and maybe it's too early to ask, since you really don't have your plan. What, what will those houses look like and cost? Because I know there's a few houses out there that just doesn't fit in the neighborhood.
Yeah, so we're, we're still studying the HOA guidelines. I mean, there's a lot of detail in there as to the requirements of what is built, um, in the neighborhood. Um, um, I know there are four houses that are, um, unsatisfactory to a number of people. Um, uh, we're not thrilled with those either. I don't have a solution to tell you about those, other than that we understand that it's a problem. Um, I haven't been able to study it long enough to tell you if those are in violation of those guidelines or if they just sneak, you know, under the wire. Um, but we're, we're working with the current owner and we've got a long list to work through to how do those four houses get resolved?
Now you brought up the HOA funds that's been paid for, I don't know how long. What happens with those funds?
Well, as I understand it right now, those are funds of the HOA, um, and they're controlled by the HOA, at least is what I've, what I've been informed. Uh, they are at a local bank. Those don't come to the owner.
So there's a board, a HOA board that controls that, all right.
There is some level of some HOA. Again, we're still, we're still sort of investigating that. But what we've been told by the owner is he has given them discretion to, to manage those funds. I, I can't tell you if that's true or not, how much is there, but there's no intent for the, for the new developer to take over those funds. Those are funds of the HOA.
Well, I, you know, and I, it's my opinion, I don't think they should go to the current developer, those.
No, 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 no. I don't think there's any expectation that that current developer is keeping those funds.
Okay.
And if that were to change, we would certainly, we would certainly let you know.
Right.
That.
I think these neighbors are ready for a change and as long as you do what you say, they will be happy with it.
Well, we'll, we'll, that, we're still determining what we can do. So we'll, we'll, we'll be honest with you about, about what that is. And if we don't feel like it's positive, we, we wouldn't.
And I know you talked to, let's talk to, talk to the people out there that, who you looked for, the trades that's going to be working out there. Uh, there, you said they're local people. You're going to give a lot of people jobs?
I think as much as, as, I mean, I think the intent, obviously, is local builders. I think that's important. I think anytime we're, you know, not that builders from outside the community can't come in, but the more that you can involve local builders, I think, I think the more successful the project will just naturally be. And, and I think the more that, that those local builders can create opportunities for local tradespeople, um, the better as well.
Good.
Ron, do you have any questions for Matt?
No, I can't think of any at the moment.
Okay, put him on the spot. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a, entertain a motion to approve resolution twelve ninety-five, um, establishing a public hearing on August twelfth?
I'll make a motion.
Don't move.
Moved by, Ron, seconded by Chuck, excuse me. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, non-agenda reports and requests. Darren, do you have anything?
Uh, just on behalf of the staff, there's a lot of roads that are closed or partially closed or train tracks are getting replaced. So just keep your head on a swivel and, uh, I know it's, it's fun to drive around and look around at some of the stuff going on, but, um, on any given day, one or two of those roads might be closed and then open the next day. So just be careful, we're aware of it and, uh, proud of all the work that's going on by the community. But there's definitely some hazards out there, so keep your head open, your eyes open and, uh, head on a swivel. That's all we've got.
As far as all the concerns of the people that came up, how are we going to address those concerns? Are we, I mean, the hearing will address those? Because I think the main thing of all is the drainage on that northeastern corner. That is a stormwater issue that should not be happening. So I just wanted to make sure that we will guarantee them that we will work hard at making sure that that water flows where it needs to be.
I think we knew that we were going to have a meeting today to request a public hearing for a month from now. And so the idea was, well, obviously, people are going to show up once you put it on the agenda. So are we going to ask everybody to just hold their comments for a month? And it seemed logical that we would just say, well, let's let everybody, the, the, the proposed developers that are going to buy it need to hear what they heard tonight, I think, because those are, quite frankly, the same things that we've all been watching and seeing for years is inactivity. Um, nobody likes to see their neighbor not taking care of their stuff. Um, so I, I think, I, I wrote down, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a recorded meeting. I know Matt is here and I think all those things, um, have been heard. Now, to Matt's point, what can be addressed when is, is a matter of getting it to change hands. I doubt much is going to happen in the next sixty days, but our hope is that it, it, it goes through, it closes, and, uh, we move forward with the new group. So I think, um, that, that was one of the valuable things of, appreciate everybody coming tonight and repeating things that we all have heard and know are going on, but have, haven't had the ability to get any action on them from the current development team, so.
Well, and I think to Matt's point, it's a local group, you know? It's, the CDC are local people and so there's more of an investment and, in our community to get some of those things done, so. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Stu. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank, yes.
How do you?
What?
Over and out. Thanks, thanks for calling in. Bye.